Yeah, and now all the costs have went up.
Crazy.
But we didn't pay him this much.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
She's always running good.
Yeah. Probably.
I mean, I'm assuming that's.
Yeah.
I guess.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Oh, no. Huh? What did you do to my car?
Put bricks to it.
You better not. Forget I have a weapon.
Okay, ready?
Tomahawk.
What's going on with this?
Are you Jack Green?
It's my dad.
Well, you're him today.
We take all his stuff off and then like when you reset it, or if it can't leave it on too long, you plug it in, it reverts back to the original setting.
You need to get an iPad.
I think he dropped it. He dropped it here. And we gave it to my kid. Well, they're like, did part of it exist? I go, you want to take it back? He's like, yeah, sure.
It's coming again.
I'm like, yeah, what are you doing?
What's that? Oh, come on. What about beauty?
It's a short agenda, so you'll be okay.
Sure. Really, really small.
Really?
No, I don't have much of them.
We'll call the meeting to order. Roll call. McCarigan. Here, Caldwell.
Here.
Green.
Here.
Join me in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, for public information, a copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is available for review. It's above Liz. For notice of changes in the agenda by the city clerk, additions may not be made to this agenda less than 24 hours before the beginning of the meeting unless added under item five of this agenda. Do you have any changes?
No changes, you're on.
Okay, five, citizens with business not scheduled on the agenda as required by state law, no matter may be considered under this item unless council determines that the matter requires emergency action. Do you have any? No. Emergency actions. No? All right, six, closed session. Council reserves the right to enter into closed session if deemed necessary if the item is on the agenda as per section eighty-four dash fourteen-ten of the Nebraska revised statutes. Seven, Scottsbluff Youth Council. Can you state your name and address?
Elizabeth Roberts, reaching an address. Good evening, we are wrapping up our winter activity season and would like to highlight some of our successes. Ava Impah was selected as a national merit finalist. The speech team was the A four district runner-up. We had a pro start team compete at state and reached second place. Hosa just returned from state competition and both Decca and Speech competed at state last week. Educators Rising will be competing at state this week. Our math qualifiers will be competing at state at the end of the month. Finally, our girls and boys basketball team concluded successful, seasons at district runner-up and district champion. Looking ahead to this month, spring sports begin all their competitions. ACT Day takes place April fifth, and not to be forgotten, prom will take place April second. As always, thank you for your continued support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What is pro start?
It's our culinary program.
Oh, yeah.
And they have competitions now.
Yes, they do.
Which is pretty cool, like the shows on. Uh, well, I don't know. You need to talk to Ms. Lutak about that.
I'm just, yeah, I'm just.
I was gonna say, it's like that thing, it's very much like the shows on TV that you watch.
They yell at them?
Yeah, what?
They yell at them?
I mean, I don't know. What happens in the kitchen stays in the kitchen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Eight, consent calendar. Items in the consent calendar are proposed for adoption by one action for all items unless any member of the council requests that an item be considered separately. Do you have any changes to the consent calendar? Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Do you have a second?
Oh, second.
Okay, motion by Caldwell, second by Green. I don't have any discussion. Anybody else have discussion? Call the roll, please. Caldwell.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
McCarigan. Yes. Nine, claims. Council to consider and take action on claims of the city. Do we have any questions on the claims? Liz, Kevin, any highlights?
I looked through it, but I didn't see anything unusual.
Nothing?
Routine to me.
Unless there's specific questions.
Any questions? Okay. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Do you have a second?
Oh, second.
Okay, motion by Caldwell, second by Green. Questions, comments? Call the roll, please. Green.
Yes.
McCarigan. Yes. Caldwell.
Yes.
Ten, financial report. Council to receive the February two thousand twenty-two financial report. Liz?
Want me to go? I don't know what you've done in the past. Do you guys usually go through these or just ask questions?
Usually they just highlight maybe the larger ones, and then if we have questions, we'll ask that.
The only thing I guess that I would point out, you all have been doing this long enough that I don't plan to go through in great detail. Unfortunately, Angela and Selena, maybe the next month I can go through a little bit more in detail of how these work and what you should be looking for.
Okay.
The, this report here, this first one, the cash outflow for the year, you know, it looks a little shocking there when you see these big outflows, these negative, what those are is cash, the net cash outflow from the funds year-to-date from October first through the end of February, and those look like big numbers. The, the reality of what's going on there, though, is all of that is scheduled. It's either debt services, capital expenditures, and so basically that fund had a net outflow for the year. But those are all scheduled. We don't have any issues with big outflows of funds that we weren't anticipating, that were budgeted for, that we didn't plan on. And if, Kim, would you flip to the next page? The more important column is that one, the second one in from the left that says the current month, those are your cash balances. That's basically your checking account balance, and so the idea is even with those cash outflows on page one, that you would obviously want positive balances here. And you can see that we are building up quite a bit of cash in these funds, and the reason for that this particular year is because we really haven't started expending a lot of money for capital yet, for various reasons. Some of it is logistical issues. We can't seem to get garbage trucks, and I think you've heard all of that information in the delay, just delays and logistical things. We've got, if you look at our enterprise funds, environmental services, we have a two million dollar transfer station, budgeted wastewater, we've got a big project coming there with the line into the plant. Water, there's a significant amount of cash there, but we have a booster pump installation that's gonna be happening, and I've touched base with all of the department heads. And hopefully, if things go as we're planning as they are today, we'll get all of that done before the end of this budget year. So a lot of cash will start going out of those funds and bring those balances back down. We've got some big wage adjustments that are gonna happen as a result of the wage study, and that will impact the general fund more than the rest of them. So that will go back down accordingly as we move through the rest of the year. So that's, those are your cash balances. The things that I put over to the right are just when you see negatives in a month, especially in a utility fund, that's usually because we're purchasing a big capital item like that dump truck in the water or wastewater fund. Can't see which one that is. That's the wastewater fund. So that's why that has that big net outflow, but for the month, government-wide, we increased our cash to four hundred thousand dollars. So those are, are almost five hundred. Those are the positives. We're increasing our cash overall, and that's ideally what you wanna be doing, so. And then behind that are just the budget reports. And you guys, you know, as in the past, if you have questions on these, if, I look at these all the time, and so if there's anything that's concerning to me, I will follow up with the department heads. And right now, I don't see anything that's concerning. We're right on track with our revenues. We're through forty-two percent of the year, so ideally you'd have fifty-eight percent or less of your revenues left to collect, and if you look like in your general fund there, we've got fifty-two. So we're ahead a little bit in our tax revenue, so we're doing well. Same with our charges for services and our enterprise funds. I do exactly the same thing on the expense side. You should have that same percentage remaining of your expenditures. The only one, and I don't know how much in detail you guys get into these, the transportation fund looks awful this year. It has nothing to do with Mark. It's because Avenue B was budgeted in last year, and it didn't, by the time we knew that it wasn't gonna happen in last year because of all the delays due to COVID, we had already filed the budget, so I will have to amend our budget this year, but I have until the end of the year to do that. So I will probably do it sometime in April, or man, you guys will get that budget amendment, and it's only gonna be for the streets fund, and it's just for Avenue B, so you can see right there where we have that huge overage on the budget remaining for capital outlay and transportation. But other than that, if you look through all the percentages, everybody is where they're supposed to be for this time of year, so we're definitely right on track. And we'll be at the six-month point here at the end of this month that we're in now, so we'll start working on budgets and rolling everything forward and doing our six-month projection for the end of this fiscal year and start working on next year's budget, so.
Are we seeing anything, any closing central garage? Any effects to that?
You know, that's something that I haven't had a chance to sit down with the department heads, but that I will have Mark for sanitation and streets, obviously, and then Kevin for the police departments, who are the biggest users of that, and have the biggest expenditures for vehicle maintenance and repairs. So that's a conversation that we're gonna have, what they're, and they can obviously, I don't know if you have a feel for, are you spending more now on oil changes and maintenance and how that all? It's not something that has been shut off for quite long enough to really probably analyze that at this point, but.
Well, and we were, we were fortunate enough to pick up a mechanic in, in the street, and a mechanic in sanitation, so they can do those. So we haven't felt that per se. They can do those. Just some big things that have to go out, you know, your computer chips that go over loads or somewhere. Another net, we handle that in-house, so it's, it's been okay.
Maybe Tom would be the other one.
We went up, we went out and shocked oil changes and general maintenance, and we think we might save money.
Yeah.
That, that was the selling point for closing, was it was just doing oil changes. There was no brake work or anything like that and paying a higher employee to do that. But yet, you've got a couple mechanics that are still doing all that, or?
We hired.
Did I misunderstand you there?
We hired mechanic slash, uh, street person. They're just a mechanic. They, they'll drive, one will drive the garbage truck when we're short, and one is out doing our snow fence or whatever he's needed to do, and we don't have anything in the shop. And right now, we've all got weapons, it's been great, but equipment's holding up, but we're doing good so far.
And those people are within the sanitation and streets departments?
Right.
Okay, so we got one in each of those departments, so their payroll lives in those departments now as opposed to being in the central garage fund. There's no activity anymore in the central garage fund.
That's good.
So all those job descriptions for mechanics are gone, or is there now mechanic in?
They were hired as mechanics.
Right, they were hired as mechanics, but in a central garage, one location, and we broke that location up. It's only a mechanic in that location and a mechanic now over in the, they're both equipped to, to do that work at both locations.
Okay. Thought we were consolidating to save money and now we're breaking it back up, so I am confused.
We should be saving money.
It was just such different things that were needed, and it was, there's kind of that sweet spot, I think, of when you have the volume of work to do to make that work with diesel engines versus gas, and I mean, it just, there wasn't enough of both to probably make that operate the way we thought we tried it. And, you know, ultimately, it saves us money and resources to have the oil changes done outsourced, but then we've got the staff on staff to do the bigger diesel engine type stuff.
And the quality of employee you didn't wanna lose, and that's why you pulled him as well, right?
Right. Yeah, we, we kept, uh, one, we, we kept, we were able to keep one and, and one had moved on, but we did retain the one.
Do you have any other questions for Liz? Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the financial report? I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
Okay. Motion by McCarigan, second by Caldwell. Any other questions, comments? Call the roll, please. McCarigan. Yes. Caldwell.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Eleven, council to receive a report on political sign regulations within the city of Scottsbluff.
Mayor and council has approached to give a review of our political sign regulations. These are all found in chapter twenty-five, article six, which is assigned as a section. The main things are for locations, they need to be posted on private property with the consent of the property owner, of course, they can't be put in right-of-way of any public street or alley, nor can they be in government property. And then finally, they can't be located in sight-distance triangle on street corners. Additionally, there's some kind of caveats, including political signs can't obstruct or impair motorist or pedestrian vision, nor can they obstruct neighboring signs on adjoining properties. As for size, there's one limitation in residential, ag, and then the O N P, the Office of Professional Zoning District, which would be like the hospital, and then the P B C, Plant Business Center, which is the mall. Signs cannot be larger than eight square feet, and then they can't exceed four feet in height. As for time regulations, we do have a forty-five day limit before, however, that's likely unenforceable. If you have any questions. And then there's a requirement to remove the signs ten days after an election, and this is for both primary and general. And then for signs that aren't in compliance, essentially, the person who, whose name is on the sign would receive written notice via mail, and given a few days to remove it, and then if it's not removed, then the city would take it and hang on to it for thirty days. That's pretty much it for political signs. Has any questions?
Those, uh, I know this is our regulations, but do we also touch on, like, if you're vandalizing other signs or there's visual rules?
Not, not through those ordinances. That would be a criminal offense.
So do you wanna elaborate, Ken, then, on, do we, do we even need to put the, when they can be out and when they have to be?
Well, the durational limits pre-event were struck down in the Eighth Circuit recently. And so there's a split in authority in the circuits on post-event. So right now, we thought thirty days was struck down in the Eighth Circuit Court of Appeals, and ours was forty-five days, which we thought was long, but apparently the city of Grand Island has just recently been sued by the ACLU that even forty-five days is unenforceable. So we're gonna have to look at all our temporary signage regulations so that it's not content-based. And so if it's content-neutral, the likelihood that they would be upheld goes way up. And so right now, yeah, we, the whole state actually has been instructed, you probably can enforce a forty-five day limitation. Pre-event, post-event, there's a split authorities, including the Eighth Circuit that says you can require them to be removed within a reasonable time, which we think ten days after the event occurs, which in this case is an election. So that appears to be still enforceable.
Unless you're putting them up for the next cycle?
Yeah. I'll be revamping our signage to treat all temporary.
All right. Thank you. All right, twelve, a council to consider the second reading of the ordinance regarding the rezone of block seven of the Five Oaks subdivision from agriculture to R four heavy-density multiple family. Kim?
An ordinance dealing with zoning amending section twenty-five dash one dash four by updating the official zoning district map to show that lots one and two, block seven, Five Oaks subdivision to the city of Scottsbluff, Scottsbluff County, Nebraska, currently zoned as agricultural, eight, will now be included in heavy-density multiple family, R dash four, repealing prior section twenty-five dash one dash four, providing for an effective date and providing for publication in pamphlet form.
Is there any discussion? Comments? I remembered, Ken. Okay.
Take notes?
Okay, B, council to consider the second reading of the ordinance repealing the GGO gateway green overlay requirements and amending the landscaping provisions beginning in chapter twenty-five, article twenty-two, section one, incorporating prior GGO gateway green overlay requirements into the landscaping sections. Kim?
An ordinance of the city of Scottsbluff, Nebraska, repealing the GGO gateway green overlay requirements found in the municipal code at chapter twenty-five dash three dash twenty-two point zero one, and amending the landscaping provisions beginning in chapter twenty-five, article twenty-two, section one, incorporating prior GGO gateway green overlay requirements into the landscaping sections, providing for an effective date and providing for publication in pamphlet form.
Okay. Questions, discussion? Okay, thirteen, council to discuss and consider action on awarding the bid for hail damage repair on the waste, on the water wastewater facilities to Twin City Roofing and Sheet Metal Inc. in the amount of two hundred and fifty-four thousand nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars and eighty-three cents.
There you have it. We did receive one bid, and that was from Twin City for that exact amount, and as we went through the bid tabs, you can see that the storm was nineteen, and so those prices for metal, and of course, the materials gone up some. And it was, the estimate was from nineteen as well, off the, off the adjusters of dollar amount, so. We'd recommend that Twin City receive that bid so we can get them on, on task and get those buildings taken care of. And I think we have one more round.
One small.
Library and, and just a little bit of a back here.
One on the range.
At the range, in the center, yeah, so it should be our last package coming after this, so. I'd like to get this one awarded so I can work on that package and then get that done before the new budget starts. So work closely.
So that estimate wasn't just slow or gone, that's actually when it was done? I had a question about, like, why the estimate was done in nineteen?
That's when, that's when the adjuster came in and did all the adjustments.
Okay.
And so now we're just catching up. We've done, wow, we've done a lot of buildings. I think this is package three or four, and so we'll have one more to go, but we're concentrating on water wastewater with this one. So they have so many outbuildings, but yeah, that, the price of material's gone up a little bit. And really, in the scheme of things, not bad at all, at two hundred and thirty estimates on two fifty-four actual.
Would you suggest that we, next time we get estimates and bids, we lock in to those prices or order in the future so that if supply chain or the prices don't go up in the future, or?
You know, I wish we knew with the future help. You know, I just think it's easier to bid these packages, at least get a feel for, for what's out there. You know, we, we kinda know things are coming. We didn't know it was gonna be this tough with steel and asphalt. But I, you know, I, I'm not sure. I, I think you take it as it comes, and, and if you're locked in and prices go down, you know, you may, you may hurt yourself.
I, I didn't know if we just needed to reestimate them or anything like that, so.
And we should could.
We'll circle back to the insurance company. So we'll look at what proceeds we received on these specific properties, and then if we need to take that back to Lauren, Kim will work with them and renegotiate that to receive additional proceeds if we come up short. They'll make us whole.
Yeah. Yeah, we're, we're.
That's what I was looking for.
Yeah, that, they always, and, and Kim does, she sends us back to insurance. If we're two fifty-four and the estimate's two thirty, they understand that. And, and there's, there's always some saved early on the buildings we did because that was before this big pandemic, so we saved money on those. Makes up for, more than makes up for the twenty-four that this was over. And again, they're just engineers, estimates is all. But our recommendation is Twin City for that dollar amount so we can get them going.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Okay, motion by Green, second by Caldwell. Questions, comments? Call the roll, please. Caldwell.
Yes.
McCarigan. Yes, Green.
Yes.
Um, fourteen, a council to receive a presentation on the Public Works Department.
Waited till he sat down.
Didn't realize it was up again, so I thought maybe for the next hour we could.
Oh, my God.
Public Works, you know, and it's been a while. I don't remember the last time probably I've updated for Public Works, but, so tonight was a good night to do that. And so I put together the organizational chart and added those supervisors in each department, and credit them. They do the daily assignments, you know, they're the ones out there that are finding the things to do, and so each department or each division has a supervisor, and a wonderful crew, staff is amazing, so. But it's, it's credit to these folks that the things out there that you'll see through here get done. And so we can go through this really quick, and, and I'm just gonna highlight some of the things because, again, it would probably take an hour to get through most of this, but you know, in the, in the streets, there's now three hundred and forty-nine point six miles of streets, so. As you look down and see what they do, and then the number of employees, you know, they do a great job with three hundred and some miles of street. And national average usually is, is one employee per thousand population, so they're doing, they're doing more work with less people, and, you know, we get the work done. And I'm always there to help them out if they need be, they don't call me much anymore, run a motor greater, but it's still fine. Every now and then they do. But then I wanted to list, you know, what, what the requirements are that each employee had to have in those departments, and so you can see down through the, the Public Works, what, what's required of those folks, that all of our CDL, which is required because of our trucks. I'm licensed in county, city, federal. But then it, it just lays out how many motors, how many heavies, and, and what they're required as far as their licenses. And then you go to the water department, that's Jack Satter, and you have twelve groundwater wells, five towers, hundred and thirty-three miles of water mains, nine hundred and fifty-one fire hydrants, one thousand five hundred and thirty water main valves. And then you have your radio reads, sixty-four twenty-six, so we're gaining, we're, we're almost there with, with the red, so we don't have to go in the yards and actually read the meter. And then you can see how many gallons are pumped annually, one point two billion, which is amazing, you know, and we keep up. We do, we've never had to ration water at this point. And then it lists those folks in that department and what they're required to have, and most of those, or all of them have to have the, the great water licenses, a four and, two and above, actually, and Jack's got the, the two, as well as a couple, but we have to have those to operate the water plant. And so when you, when we come forward and we have schools and, and conferences or renewing licenses, these are the licenses required, and that's, that's what we're actually paying those folks to go do. And then you have the wastewater department, and there is a hundred and one miles of sewer mains, five sewer lift stations, two thousand ninety sewer manholes, but the interesting part of the plant is the six hundred and seventy million gallons average. But the interesting part of the plant is the six hundred and seventy million gallons average influence every year, which is incredible of water coming in. And we discharge five hundred and thirty million gallons of effluent to the North Black River. And it goes through quite a process, but we're activated sludge. And it's, it's vinyl, it's UV'd and then we're discharged to the river. We have a canal that discharges, but it comes out clean. We have our own lab. He takes care of all our samples and we're in really good shape out there with those guys. And so I list, how that you can see the compost or the treatment stuff that goes to the, out to the tree dump, there's, there's three hundred and fifty metric tons of bio solids that come out of the treatment process. And then the employees that are part of that department and what they're required to have. And again, they're CDL licensed and they're Class Twos and Bs for their wastewater. When we went to activate the sludge, we were lagoon years ago, so then we upgraded. So now they have to have a little more certifications to, to operate the plant. And that's Lynn Garten and he as well is over stormwater, which are fifty-nine miles of storm sewer mains, two thousand two hundred and thirty-five catch basins in town and fifteen storm sewer outlets at the river. So we have various locations. And as I had brought up in the past, when the, when the water comes up and the pipes are under that pressure of the river, because that's where we discharge, then that's why we get the flooding in certain areas, because those pipes just can't take that discharge. So it's the back pressure of those pipes. And it, and it tells you that where we use the Scottsbluff drain as well, so we have drainage into that that helps bypass around town. And Lynn also has the compost facility tree dump. And it shows you the, the tons of trees inbound and trees outbound. And that's with the mulch and tons of yard waste in and bio solids in and compost out. And I have three folks out there now. We have the operator and they're Class B licensed as well. And they're working on their US composting certifications as, as we speak. I've sent two to class already to, to get those. Environmental Services, that's Anthony Harris. And so as you can see, we have a lot of tons of, of garbage that we haul to, and we take to the gearing landfill, over ten thousand tons. Forty-two point four tons average collected daily and the recycle that's collected. The yard waste, three hundred and twenty-nine new yard waste containers distributed. Because we're getting that time of the year where yard waste is about to begin. Sixty-four blackout, block rollouts. And then it just, we broke it down into our weekly pickups. So you understand how many times that truck is up and down and up and down the alleys or the streets. We have ten waste trucks. We have five thousand eight hundred and ninety-nine customers. And all of our solid waste goes to the gearing landfill as of now. Single stream goes to the gearing landfill. And all of our separated good goes to Denver. We have twelve employees in that and you can see their supervisor, he's CDL, he's on a truck a lot of the times. But all of our operators are CDL licensed as well. So that, that helps us in the wintertime in street departments or anywhere else where we can use those folks. And then you have Parks Department, that's Ricky Deeds. And there are two hundred and eighty-seven acres of park property that has to be taken care of, which has fifty-seven sites. And so we listed those, did break them out specific, but there's twenty-three parks, five baseball fields, four softball fields, four, seven campground sites, two dog parks, or freedom tree park, thirteen playgrounds, seventeen shelters, ten miles of concrete pathway that I hear about a lot, six restrooms, one splash pad, swim pool and a hundred and seventy acres of irrigated turf. So it keeps those guys busy. And you can see what we have in, in that. There's thirteen seasonals that we'll hopefully employ, but we have nine and we have two openings. So we'll have eleven in there. But they're all pesticide applicator licensed. A few are pending that they went to take their exam to get, but they need to be pesticide licensed to, to get through that. In recreation, again, that's Rick Deeds. And that's taking care of the pool. And we have two pool managers and fifteen lifeguards at the rec at the time. And we, last year we opened June one and we closed the first week of August. But those young kids are going back to college, so we just didn't have enough people to keep it open. And the last was Fairview Cemetery and that's Vince Keller. Runs a great operation out there. Oh, that's a, it always looks nice. It's a forty-acre facility. And it, it tells you how many burials any year usually. And he spelt that out in cremations and, and burials so that you, you know, you could understand how long it takes to fill the, the place up. But we should be good for another twenty years. And then we will move across Forty Second into the area where the solar complex and the soccer field is. But again, I have a supervisor up there and two full-time maintenance. And then we'll hire two to, two to three seasonal people to help him out with the mowing and the, and taking care of, of the cemetery. But a lot of information in there in a short time, because when I said an hour, the, the live wasn't good. So we'll keep it to three minutes. But I'll take any questions and happy to get you any more information that you folks would like to have as far as Public Works.
Mark, on average, all your supervisors, how many years of service do you think what the average years of service is on your supervisors?
Wow, uh, twenty-plus. Twenty-plus. You know, and I guess going way back in, in eighty-nine and ninety, and I'm giving up a lot of time here, but that's how Public Works came about. It used to be that there were department heads for each division. And then they reorganized and that's how Public Works came together. And so the water shop was south of the railroad tracks. So I combined water and wastewater in the same facility out of it. But what it did was allow those folks to cross train. So my water guys and wastewater guys can do each other's. And then with Public Works, it allows all of us, which it should have always been, but it is now, that the equipment's shared, manpower's shared. If somebody's short, we're there. If somebody needs our help, we're there just. But it's, it's a great, you have a really good, you have the best of the best in, in your staff at, at Public Works. I've been here a long time and I can tell you this is a great staff. Longevity means a lot. They like being here and they like doing their job. Very dedicated. And I think it's just a, a phone call away from any of us to, to do anything that anybody would want. But I'd be, yeah, I'd be happy to answer anything. It's just a lot. It's, it's a lot of miles. I think once you see what's above ground and underground makes sense to share that information because we don't do that often enough for you. But with budgets coming and capital, if I'm asking for something, maybe it, you know, it gives you a better idea of, of the equipment we need or to do our jobs right.
Does the city help? Like when new hires come in, do they help them get like the pesticide licenses, that kind of stuff?
Yep. Yep, and, and the new CDL law went into effect, but prior to that, we would, if they didn't have one, we would put them on the trucks, we'd get them through the manuals, get them to the courthouse, get them through the CDL. That time's changed a little. It's a course now that they have to take, but we'll get them through that if, if they don't have it.
Maybe up to five weeks.
Five weeks, yeah. Yeah, so it's, it's.
So kind of going off of what Jordan started with, you, you mentioned that there's some that have like twenty years and that knowledge didn't come overnight, obviously. What do we have in place for not necessarily new hires, but the succession plans? Like who's coming up? How is everybody as far as like the training? You know, I love that you got the, the Department of Terrorist names up there, but like who is there? If they're sick, who picks them up? Obviously there's people, you know, in other portions like you explained, but is there anybody in that department that would step up or would take over or how's that?
Yeah, we always have, we always have somebody available right under that supervisor. If they're gone, they'll, they'll always call me. But I just don't do their, their daily work assignments. But we do have, in every department, there's somebody right under that supervisor in his absence that steps in and does the assignments.
With, with a considerable amount of experience as well.
Absolutely.
And that's kind of the hard part too, is, you know, hiring the new or, or trying to bring people into the different fields.
Yeah, a lot of longevity in Public Works. There really is, there's. I'm guessing twenty years minimum for, you know, that, that's not for all, but, but that's, that's, that's pretty normal. In fact, I, I can tell you now, I have a wastewater employee fifty years coming in September.
That's crazy.
So that speaks for, you know, that speaks for the city. And he's, he's still here, he's still going. He's going for that fifty years, but God bless him. I mean, that's a, that's a long time. But I think that's what you have in, in the, in the staff that you have from the ladies that take the phone calls and the administrative staff to the, to the guys that are out there doing the work. That's not credit to me because they go out and do, I can change it two minutes and they'll go out and do whatever and they just never complain. That's just a great staff. You have the best of the best. Thank you.
All right, the council to discuss and consider action on the inter-local agreement for the Scottsbluff Aquatic Center agency and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement.
Well, as you know, we passed a resolution to put LV three fifty-seven, an additional absent sales tax on the ballot this fall. Part of that process requires us to have an inter-local agreement with another public agency within the city that will form another agency. Three members of the board or this agency will be appointed by the city and two will be appointed by the CRA. And then the board then keeps track of and monitors milestones in regard to the project and makes recommendations in regard to the project, although the city, of course, contracts for the project and pays for it. And under, excuse me, under this particular agreement, no funds will go to that board or agency that's adopted. They simply will monitor the progress of the, of the, of the aquatic center in this particular case. But we have to have an agreement in place and then once the election results are known, we'll be bringing this matters for the mayor to appoint some additional people on this agency.
And this is because of how three fifty-seven was drafted, that this was a requirement?
Yes.
And the reason why three fifty-seven was drafted is to get around vote to raise the, the sales tax by itself. So, so is that why three fifty-seven was drafted originally?
The statute seventy-seven, twenty-seven, one forty-two allows a municipality to increase their sales tax higher than one point five percent. In order to do that, we have to follow the statute and the statute requires this inter-local agreement. If it's passed.
If it's passed.
But they all require an election. I'm not sure what you were asking, Jordan.
Well, I was trying to, and this doesn't matter, but the original inception of LV three fifty-seven, I thought it was, I, I can't remember why they even passed it to begin with. If it, it doesn't matter.
The, the idea was to assist municipalities in infrastructure projects, which they didn't have enough revenue to complete. So they, they allowed them to use a sales tax method to finance those. And that's the procedure we're going through.
And can, can it only go up to some?
Two percent is the maximum. One point five percent is for the general use for like LV eight forty and our economic development funds. And if we want to increase it more than a one point five percent, this statute is the mechanism.
Okay.
And most people call it LV three fifty-seven, but that legislative bill's with the past many years ago and it's actually statute seventy-seven, twenty-seven, one forty-two in the Nebraska statutes.
Okay, thanks, Sam.
Sure. You'll recall, we've done this twice before. I don't know, I don't think Nathan, were you on the?
I was in the back corner.
Okay, you were here. Jordan may have been on the council. I don't think the mayor was on the council then, but we have passed very similar inter-local agreement bill probably with the CRA. You reviewed two of these before. This one, of course, is much more narrow. You know, the other ones had several infrastructure projects limited. This one is just the municipal aquatic center.
Okay. You have any other questions, comments? And then it comes before, if it passes, then it comes before council to decide or determine. Who makes the recommendations of who's on it?
The, well, the mayor appoints three people.
Okay.
And the chairperson of the CRA will appoint two people.
Okay.
So there's a five-member board that will be formed once we know the election was successful. But we can enter in, we should enter into this agreement.
Prior to that?
Yeah, now. I mean, we should approve it and have you authorize it. The CRA has already reviewed it in there, I believe, there and removed it, so.
Okay.
Trying to get our decks in the round for this.
Okay.
So we don't have the names yet?
No.
No, no names yet.
Not that far.
We'll be the last one with three touches.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'm going to approve.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, motion by Colwell, second by Green. Any other questions, comments? Call the roll please.
McCarroll.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Colwell.
Yes.
All right, fifteen. Council reports informational only. This item is intended for council members to update and inform other council members of meetings attended since the last city council meeting. Do you have any updates? No? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'm going to adjourn.
Do you have a second?
I suppose.
Call the roll please.
Colwell.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
McCarroll.
Yes. Or adjourn.
Yes, I did.